If I die today... Ladies and gentlemen, please, shall we all rise? Shall we all give a big round of applause? I P O B! I P O B! I P O B! One family! I P O B! One family! I P O B! One family! I P O B! Oh, how nice and young man! Dikono! Ubuwa kage buru ibeje boku we ne fe our Supreme Leader. Kobo konchi neke onye kabineliwe. Kobo konna! Onye kere Biafra! Kobo konna! Onye hurumuyananyo? Diko konyo pula kuroto, konyo pula wadjoku, kawori beje boku, ye fe ya, koko do Jhova kabineliwe. I P O B! One family! I P O B! One family! I P O B! One family! One family! I P O B! I am very, very happy to see all of you here in Houston today. Very happy.
I'm happy for sure too.
Before we proceed, we must dedicate this very gathering to the memory of those that have passed that we may leave, to those that fell in battlefields across the land of Biafra, those that spilled their blood that this very bad name may resonate in the land of the living in 2019. We shall remember them. Customarily, I would pray, but today, I want an elder, a veteran, a warrior of Biafra to pray for us. I met him yesterday, and today, I want him to pray for us. We are all together. We are all fighting for what we have fought before. From the beginning to the end, our mind is going to be fixed at one point: Biafra. When I saw our brother Carlo last night, it reminds me the hour I was commanded to do something that several of you were not born at the time I did it. But we are all going to pray the lives that we lost, the lives that are forgotten, the lives that are still to be remembered. We will, one more time. I fought as a captain from the rank of lieutenant to the rank of being captured, even as a major. Glory be to Christopher that beat me up from my sumary sector and brought me out to Umar Bay, where I was asked by Njokku, "Make sure I go to Potaka." But we have lost so much! We have lost so many! We have shed so much blood! We will not forget. Father, the name of Jesus, we are asking you, mighty God, that you are God that knows all, the beginning and the end. The hour has come again. It is by your grace that we had those that are crying, that are afraid, and still are crying, shed their blood, did not withstand, did not withhold, did not step back, never been moved by the trench. The hour has come for all of us to have one mind unified and believe. Oh God Almighty, listen to your children, the men, the women, the boys, the girls, the elderly and the young. Have rest up their thoughts and say, "God Almighty, are you alive? God Almighty, are you alive?" Be with us. Be with us. Be with us. It is the power of God that raised up Odomo Gudukwadi time. He addressed his men, the first 755 soldiers at Gold Cap. I was one of them. But we fought, we did not him, we did not him, we did not him, and we were able to stand in the power of the onslaught of the Nigerian army. And they knew the proper soldiers were gathered, and they fought hard. God Almighty, we are asking you at this moment, we have come from north-southeast America, and we are asking you, dear father, don't forget your promise that your children will not be vanquished, your children will not be destroyed, your children will not be destroyed, your children will be not destroyed. Oh God Almighty, let your people come together and let that which he hoped led to lead, let it be a leader. Let him be a leader. Let him be a leader. We will be unified. We will be unified. We will be unified. The land of Biafra. The land of Biafra. The land of Biafra. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Omuchinete, ana kwa kewa dikono. Kainkuru no our eldest man. Apunuma ana hebe putere na fokaraga. Ezimwa iti neke edire kosi ere mre hapo. Ana ma yano neleliwe. We neche ndidi Biafran, dike dera leba. Diko kage buru oche. Ana ma yo, onye obola no eba diko, imenyo, ekwen tedi, cellphone ni ne, beke naseke shoto hontam. Diko omuchinete, omu Biafra. Onyaga la manne ya, dikonyo pula ma nyo cellphone. Kogare uwu, nandoki uwu, gabese gi, gi ne patara. Iji neke di funugi, ne mo nyonyo. We have professional videographers in the house. Please. Omuchinete, I nature, kandi onyema, we're corai our national anthems. Now, are we ready?
Alright, so actually I can hum it. It's actually very natural. So let's all stand, please.
Land of the right is a we love and cherish. Give the whole land of our mighty heroes. We must stand our lives on which our fairies. We shall protect our lives from all our foes. Guardian of Christ is there for all we need. Then we'll try to be a better friend. Oh God Almighty, our son that he is. Guide our mood and bless me through our strength. Give us your strength to lead a new man is called. To give a now to not give past the grave. Let the guru to serve his rest with mess. To make his pride a land of right.
Oh, yeah, Biafra!
Oh, yeah, Biafra!
Does anybody know how to sing American anthem, you please? No? I can hum that.
Can somebody come up to assist us for that of the American National Anthem? Do we have any of the young girls? Yes! Yes! As visitors in this foreign land, we are visitors in this foreign land. And this is Biafran American. He is now going to sing the American National Anthem. Are you going to support him? Is in the... Thank you! Thank you, thank you mommy. Thank you, our son. Thank you, the little Biafran. Thank you. Distinctively, ladies and gentlemen, please, can we take our seats? And please do not forget, our cellphones must be shut down, please. Our cellphones must be shut down. On behalf of our Supreme Leader, on behalf of our Houston coordinators, once again, I respectfully and humbly welcome all sons and daughters of Biafran. At this point in time, let us request the presentation of the traditional kola note to be presented and brought forward by our Secretary General. Please, let the kola note appear, please. Abapu yo son one ne. Kola note, please. One ne, diko wabo he, he ana gona ante. Baburiya biya. Kedeti our leader, Justin. One ne biya. Okewana alu, ezia ata, ne duani. They do I P O B in Houston. Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hey, Biafra! I P O B!
One family!
I P O B! One family!
I P O B!
We must continue, and freedom is ours. They won.
They won.
Metuwa froja ka, babu roja, kai gosi, onye nduani, onye sympathy, ogolozo ebiya. Gosi yoji, yahu ya. Metuwa yaka, ai guruya o, onyo ki, ogosera yoji. Baba ma? Na moku akujie, dikonye na makka oputaya, kota gosera yoji. Nibona tulu, suna tente, na yenyembo manne. Arolagogo onyujo. Akelere mchinete, moba tetan. Nandri ne kwareno, ndichina kani nandu esole. Dede. Abapu yo so buko, ekosiye dede. You know, we don't blaze our kola note in English. Kola note, we know, does not understand English, so we use our language. Please, bear with us as we speak the language that the kola note understands. Traditionally, as an elder, I will have my cap on my head. I won't remove it as I blaze the kola note. That's the tradition. I will also let you know that we use the traditional Igbo language, or Igbo. It is this kind of kola note that we use in our prayers, in Igbo. Chinake keke rowa, ezonani we, anya zurumbara. Umwe ke kare reke ma ebanyenon. Anyo umigo. Ano umu Biafra? Anya moko la de seki gala nijya. Na diko, inela nyanyanumele, ela nyanyana pa anme ya ne. Na bada, okuani biuku na nyansoa, ena wanda yongo gushi, nde la kaku anye. Ihelela anye gato, nani la ni ge uku, nani la ni ge funobi. Ndika ni ku, ndika ni ku, ndika ni ku che, nandja ine ku taja. Mecha la anyo anidiri che no bi. Ma jukun ke kama, onye kilo para guruguru, ne che ndiye, che mwenine. Owu kuani cha agi che na libro. Onye taro dihoga, na anjo ka, anka, ka na mamine ne ne tumu. Na dikonya ya mamine, mezo ka ni ku, me karya ka ni ku na ngaji sa.
Yes!
Nde won. Nde won. Nde won. Mbak, we la ta oje gi, buroje diwa na, ne lu. Yeah, our Supreme Leader. Oh, my dear, diko wabo kala magi, woke muroki, so your highness, wabutodiya. Na yenyembo toji. Diko, bada tan. Emuwa, onyanya mbare shioka, no eba. Diko, diko diapi weroji. Onyana mbare shioka, ye yoji. That is, this is the the credit of civilization of Igbo. Anambra weroji. Weroji, nyonye nugu state. Onyane nugu state, the federal capital of Biafran. Onyane nugu state. Ye yoji. Ofonya wero, osoli be ya onu. Weroji, ye professor, osueke for Imo State. Laya here. Kedio nyabiya, no eba, la poji, be nee abia. Omune parama, awara omune jojo ezie. Weroji, chonyo egboni state. Egboni state, omune akane biya. Weroji, we're great professor Osadobe, Shidelta. Onyaa bu manne, the first premier of Big Western State. Dennis Osadobe, ye yoji. Weroji, chotonya, iwele, onye diva state. Igocha, diko, ke donya diva state ne eba. Romeo, na mbie weroji. Ya bu monai, ndiya ni bruza wu beke. Beke shiriponi, buguma. Kalabarim, wero bada, okrika. Ne mbé, ye yoji, ye weroji.
Oh, yeah, Biafra! Oh, yeah, Biafra! Oh, yeah, Biafra! Oh, yeah, Biafra!
Please, is anybody from Igala in the house? Is anybody from Igala? Is anybody from Abu Ibo? Anya kamme? I saw a deer. No, as a woman, we can't give you name. Name Nuriana, don't worry. I saw a deer. Song songe ten? Anya kamme? Ne, anya ye oje, onye flower kenga. Cross River State. Cross River State. Ke donya Cross River? Wero piya? Yes. Igala is in the house. Okay, get it for, give it to him. No, 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 get it. Oh, you want to ha? No, I've planned out of the, anya kula wa, oh, flower ya? Alright. Oji, emuwa onyense. Emuwa onyense. Emuwa onyense in the house. Mbak, wetera, la konyense. Onuma no manalibo. Awunze de tiense, ogunishi. Ndemro ma echi, la kono nyaima, no manalibo. Onyense. Onyense wetoji, ori olendense ni ne. Period. Mba, weroji, nyofonye, nahandri ne ku chi, ke he lo rohunu. Neya, mbare so, Nuriana. Oji ha olorinso. Kakaze, ganya, kawaya, goruto nyobula. Let it be shared. Itoma in the house? Onne? Oyi? He omunai, oyi? Omune kola ni neche. Are they in the house, Kogi? In the house? Igala, in the house? Igala wero goji? Yes. Thank you. Oji akowadan, diko. Bayasa. Somebody from Delta has only taken kola note. Osadobe is from Delta. Is anybody from Bayasa? Omune Okilo. Anybody here? Omune Jonathan, guraishi. Ano here? Thank you, diko. Abapu yo so. God bless you. Ladies and gentlemen, only one goes you know, may God bless all of us for being here. We will continue to accord this respect for the fact that our leader is here in this, in this city today. Life, you all remember, during 1967 to 70, there was a popular word, sabodua. As at last week, in Ibo Cat Lake Church, I witnessed sabodua's who was telling me that our leader will not be here. Ay, chinake. Sabodua's, shame unto them. Sabodua's, shame unto them. You are a living witness. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point in time, please permit me to welcome to the microphone our Zona Coordinator, Ezia Ada, Ezimwa. Munachim Sagha, lady, opala, diko, ubunaka.
Thank you, Mazzi. I P O B!
One family!
I P O B!
One family!
One family!
I P O B!
One family!
I P O B!
Welcome, omuchinake, the children of God are here. So, my name is Munachim Sagha, like he said, and I am going to give a little opening statement. I can't believe I'm doing this. I'm the most shyest person. I want freedom for my people.
Yes.
So, I want to use this occasion to... I want to first, first of all, speak by leader, my lord and my savior. I want from you, for your permission, he did not tell me to call him so. But I find I did you so, my lord and my leader. Thank you, thank you for coming to here. You two, free leader of indigenous people of Biafra, Mazzi Nafikano. I do want to thank our deputy in Masu Chebevo, as well as the head of the Red Rat of State, Mazzi Chika, in those years, I P O B North American Red, Mazzi Obi, Obi, we go to here now. And a US coordinator, my wonderful Mazzi, he's here. That's a tall handsome director. That's a tall handsome director. And of course, all the principals are all over the world. We thank you for your timeless offering to your people. We thank you for time and time, staying up all night, I know for me I'm not able to sleep. Because I want freedom for my people. And of course, I cannot be here tonight without my sister Aikus. Oh, I'm sorry. I cannot be here tonight without my sister Aikus in Kethoki. She does, she's my one of ones, she helps me with everything. And do want to acknowledge my husband. For allowing me to serve my people, husband, I thank you. Of course, the distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon to everyone. You all are welcome to this great event. Today is indeed an evangelium in the lives of people, the people of Biafra. It is an honor to have the leader of indigenous people of Biafra, Mazzi Nandi Kanu. Ohamadike wa. Of the Biafra in our midst. A man of honor and vision. Who has seen our destination, even when the journey took off. No wonder he's so passionate about what he's doing. His vision is so unique and clear to him. That he is confident and comfortable working with oppositions. He freely takes hard questions from critics. And does not attack anyone. Does not attack anyone who is honestly doing the right thing for the people. Rather, he welcomes them with an open arm. And example in his last meeting with chairman of the Wodimo Congress. Officer Joffre. His love and dedication to his people of Biafra is quite infectious. This is a man that has given up everything. Including his life. To see that his people are free. He's therefore not surprised that he has no equal when it comes to freedom. When it comes to the people of Biafra, when it comes to fighting for his people. People have come before him. And others are claimed to fight for Biafra freedom, also exist. But with his outbreak to freedom fighting. We have seen that some of these people were never, are not sincere in getting freedom for their people. They only wanted to make a name for themselves. They often make a fortune from the misery and pain of their people. Some of them even get to the extent of calling themselves the elite. And they have the audacity to call their own people miscreants. And as a result. Ashamed to identify and team up with their people. Unlike this group of persons. Mazzi Nandi is everything to everyone. He freely identifies with his people. Irrespective of their social class. He's even ready to be labeled a miscreant along with his people. You know, he was asking for a T-shirt that says miscreant. So he's willing to be labeled a miscreant. For his people. They willingly obey his command. Without being bribed or controlled. In case study, is the annual thirty of May sit at home in Biafraland. It is a no far that the Biafran people are Republicans. And very democratic in their approach to life. So when you see them committed to a man, he must have won their hearts. Freedom of speech include the freedom to defend, to offend people by telling the truth. Why? Because the truth will set you free. But first, you will have to be pissed off, unfortunately. This is the approach Mazzi Nandi Kanu has used to wake up the people of Biafra. He made us go back to whom we are. The people of the truth, the people is Ogo Bundo. Truth is life. He also made us begin to see and project into the future. He warned us about the dangers ahead. And as a result. Helped to bring us together into one big IPOB family. The work of Mazzi Nandi. Through the past few years, he fought himself. For over fifty years, that is. Since the Biafra genocide. In nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy. More than three point five million women and children were gruesomely amissed in Mount Kasaka. It has been very difficult to bring the Biafran people together since then. However, today. All that has, all that has changed. As we have, we are here present under one roof. Representing every different part of Biafraland. Working together towards the freedom of our people. This indeed is a great achievement. As a female Biafra freedom fighter. I have learned a lot. Part of which that the reason Africa was left in that continent for over four hundred years. Is that women were not given the rightful place in the government and the leadership. Like in other countries. Policies and decisions were made on their behalf. Without allowing them to participate in the process of that decision making. How would you effectively represent those that you cannot comfortably identify with? Rwanda. A nation that suffered genocide as Biafra is today being built up at a very fast pace. Our government is committed to ensuring equal rights for women and men without prejudice. To the principle of, without prejudice, to the principle of gender equality in nation building. The two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and thirteen Rwanda parliamentary election. Osha did an unprecedented record breaking, sixty four percent of seats for female candidates. Making Rwanda the top country for women in politics. Although we are yet to be fully restored. I believe that IPOB will get more female participation if women. Because in Biafraland, women will be treated equally. So to every Biafran freedom fighter present here today. Seeing our collective future is very important. Therefore, my counsel for us is to see the project as a communal project. Not a private business. It is not about me. It is not about you. It is about the people of Biafra. Therefore, there's no need for necessary competition. Just recognize your brothers and sisters' gifts and allow them to work for Biafra. Every Biafra is uniquely gifted. The challenge there is recognizing and maintaining your leg in use of your gifts. Also, it is critical for us to boycott every wrong association. The people are tied boys club for the purpose of this presentation. And only hang around visionary people. Agreements who will make your dream a reality. And also boycott those selling our rights and the future of our children for their notoriety. And their political interests. How do we identify them? They are the ones that can freely speak about freedom in the zoo and they will not be arrested. That's how you know who is against your freedom. Therefore, I'm calling on children of Tuko Di Gaviaman. Children of God for, in case for our brothers and sisters. Especially the women, to rise up and be counted towards restoration of nation. That will leave a heritage for our children. Finally, having said all this. I urge everyone to press on to this prize that is worth fighting for. A free and fully restored Biafra nation. A super nation of all nations. Flowing with milk and honey. That will make life easy for our future generation. All hey Biafra! Freedom is U.S.A. Freedom is Biafra! Freedom wa Africa!
In nineteen seventy one. During the African Cup of Champions. What a final match. The then FC chairman. From Ethiopia. Scheduled Rangers International to play column start of Dini in April. But the then. The then chairman for Eastern Province Sports Commission. Went to the administrator office and asked the president, said, "No." Rangers cannot win this match in April. Please. Let's play this match on thirtieth of May. Nineteen seventy one. A singer applied it to AFC and it was approved. On the day of that soccer match in Enugu. I remember as if it were yesterday. Ernesto Tolko. May his soul rest in perfect peace. Rangers three, column stars. Nothing. That was a commemoration of Republic of Biafra. Thirtieth of May nineteen seventy one. Despite our surrender in nineteen seventy and who had returned to the Nigerian family. The war has continued against us. By other means. We are surrendered. By smiling faces in the Nigerian family and we reciprocated with generous smiles and total trust. Having indeed been vanguards of a united Nigeria. But. Whenever and wherever we look around, we see casualties. Umu ibo casualties. In the comprehensive sense of the world. We see trailer load of dead, mutilated bodies. A home environment hostile and discouraging to economic development. All forms and determination in workplaces and places of residence outside Ibo land. And inevitable consequence, nagging. Feeling of insecurity and the complex it brings. Our shigane buya. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Let me humbly welcome our brothers and sisters from Ijok Nation. Let me welcome our brothers and sisters from Anyoma. Isoko. Iropo. Isakiri. All those that believe in Biafra, that always speak Ibo. Ije Ibo. Kachina te goze hernaha Jesus. Ladies and gentlemen, according to our program. I am going to hand over the microphone. To one of our elders, men. A leader in the IOP. IPOB. One man. Where you go go. IPOB. IPOB. One family. Ohamadike. Oh, who we had in the river. Those who didn't understand what he said, said, "Ohamadike, you're the reason we are here." Without Ohamadike, there's no here. Without Ohamadike, there's no Biafra. For what is happening to us. We must all raise arms and squash them. Respectfully, all our elders. From every part of this world. We recognize you. All our youth. You are going to hear the elders talk to you. Because you will take over. We cannot allow the Fulalis. That do not develop anything. To destroy us. It will never happen because we're working and Tukua Berma is behind us. All of you that are here today are ordained and blessed. Our country is ours. I just want to thank you for coming. I just want to. Hardly thank you for coming. Emetie nume chana, ayewote Biafra. Makana ndio o koha. Our elders. Our women are charged. Like our able. Houston Zono Coordinator spoke. In IPOB, we work. Respectfully with the leadership of IPOB. Under Nandi Kanu. Therefore, we are here. To humbly. Thank you again. I'll come back and talk to you some other time. I'm the national coordinator of USA. The national coordinator of USA. Texas is lucky to have me in their state. I have our brothers and sisters who are here in Houston. Doing the necessary job. And I acknowledge all of them. Whether I call you name or not. We honor you, we thank you, we ask you to continue. Because history. History will treat you right. History will treat you right and Tukua Berma will continue to bless you for what you do. All you do need to sacrifice. We do need because of. Our unborn children. Our future generation. Our elders. And us. Will sacrifice everything sacrificeable. We will. We will prove it to you. We're ready to work with those who want to work. We're not ready to work with those who just talk. Or hadike has done, or madike has done, done. That's why we follow you. And who failed to introduce our state coordinator, who is here in the house. Mazzi Chilove, please identify yourself. I wanted to make sure. That anytime you need help. You see these three people, but it's not us. You see our members. We have the registry. You put your name there. And you put your number there. And you put where you reside, not your home address, anything of that nature. We just want to, if you want us to talk to you, we will come and we serve you. We are here to serve. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll talk to you later. Thank you, sir. Hey! God has written today. In his book of life. For those of us who are here today. We will all live to witness the proclamation of Biafra nation. Before. We start to recognize. The Biafran veterans. Something significant happened in nineteen seventy. Immediately after the Nigeria-Biafra war. That was not a civil war. Who remember the deputy governor of Anna Plastet under Chief Jim Mobodo? Engineer Roy Humanyi. Do you remember that name? One of the Biafran scientists. When they did compile. All the things that Biafran discovered during the crisis. Including Obuniwu. Rocket. This, that. When they compiled all the whole. Statistics. They went to face division Enugu. Underled stupid Brigadier Ije Desala. And handed over every document to him. Desala invited military police. Asked them to bring a gallon of petrol. And they burned all the whole documents. Chineke wo to do, abo no documents, nahha Jesus. If Imano Obomuti assembled all the scientists. He was implemented. By Goan. Today, they cannot lay hands. On how Obuniwu was discovered. Today. Historically. Nigeria can never say yes without getting Biafra. The first Nigerian. That won gold medal during the Commonwealth. Ohamadike. Who was the first middleweight, a lightweight, middleweight champion of the world? Yawonye, Victorida. Who was the first keeper of Nigerian grinnigos in nineteen forty five? Nigerian Forest team, Dananyam. Who was the first captain of grinnigos to win the African Cup of Nations? Christian Charmanchwe Mekachubu. Biafra. Who scored the winning goal, Nigeria won nineteen ninety six. Green Dogg, piece of Atlanta, Carolina. Green Dogg, Lopes, Atlanta, Kaluwa, Biafra. As are today, ninety-eight percent of Nigerian female football team are men of Biafrans. Ladies and gentlemen, please, wherever you are, take your seat. We are now going to thank God to recognize the living souls of the Biafran veterans. We are going to request all of them to please stand up and let us give them a very big round of applause. Please, all the veterans, all the veterans come out. All the veterans, step outside. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Something happened in 1967. We were coming back from primary school, mother's, sometimes school, my, my. Along the road, we saw a flyer. On it was a military man with his medicine. It was written on it, "This man is ready." Are you? Omoi Biafra, are we ready? Are we ready? On behalf of our leader, on behalf of our leaders, we are asking our Almighty God, who has continued to retain your life, who has continued to keep you. You will all live to see the proclamation of this Biafran Nation, naa Jesus. Naa Jesus, naa Jesus. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Omoi Biafra, thank you, sir. Omoi Biafra, thank you. Omoi, thank you. Can we have our seats? Nam, Biafra. Yes. Omoi Biafra, as one yes, sir. Please, show down your self, my brothers. Biafra, Biafra, man, nam, thank you. Thank you. Please. Our Minister for Defense is giving me security instructions. Please, nobody should pass this line. Please, do not extend their movement, Biafra. Yes. You're okay, you're right. There is something so special about Biafra. I have never been in an event in Houston and there is tranquility. It has never happened before. This is the only time in Houston. A message is said, "An event will start at two, three and you see people before one thirty." Biafra gakani hunaha Jesus. Yes. This is a show. I remember Professor Emel Wale, one of the greatest scientists in the United States. I have told my wife. My wife does not believe in what I believe. And I have told my son, "If I die tomorrow, don't cry." Bulam, Burebso So leave Biafran flag, tiram, nonogaala, balea kiti. Every family have this same problem. Ninety percent of our women no longer believe from where we come from. That's why I'm going to vote for Trump. Yes. Those of them who say no, Trump will send them home. Those who believe in Biafra, you will all stay. Thank you. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, there is a proverb in Ibo. Please, our brothers and sisters who come from other tribes, permit me to say this proverb. Isn't it? This is our Supreme Leader. Aguepulii, you can dispute it. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time to hand over this microphone to the Anointed One of God. This is the time to hand over this microphone to the Chief Servant. Ginebe, if you are praying, please always remember him in your prayers. Every night, we will sleep with our wives and children. He has never slept without sleeping with the Biafra. He has never worked up without working up with the Biafra. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not qualified to hand over this microphone to our Supreme Leader. I am going to hand over the microphone to our National President, who will, distinguishedly and respectfully, take it to our leader, over to you, sir.
Before we get started, we have a new Biafran song. It's just gonna play for a few minutes. We spend a lot of time and energy practicing this song, learning this song. Please, listen to the words of the song, not really debating. It makes a lot of difference.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I P O B. One family. Deonu, everybody, thank you, thank you. It is that time we called you for, for the Thahu meeting, when our, our Madike has honored and will honor you to talk to you as to why you must have your nation. This song that you just enjoyed, whether you danced to it or you just listened to it, I can assure you that I know that you enjoyed it. All right. That song is presented, was put together by our children here in Houston. You may know or you may not know, the reason the enemy is after us is because our creativity, our innovation, our city building, everything that is good. They failed and they'll continue to fail. I P O B. I P O B. One family. Deonu, oh, Hamadike, I won't delay your talking to us because our ears are open, ready. I will listen. They will listen. We will listen. Deonu, Hamadike. I P O B. I P O B. I P O B. One family. I thank all of you for being here today. And if the enthusiasm, the punctuality. If the camaraderie and the brotherhood and the togethers I have seen in Houston can be replicated across America, I assure you that Biafra will come. We have come to preach the gospel of heaven. Who's your march in a? And here in Houston, I must preach it. Our veterans are here. And it's a very good thing that you have danced to music. It's very good because I don't have good news for you. You know, it's one of those scenarios where somebody will ask you a question and say, "I have news for you, one is bad and one is good, which one do you want first?" I think we have dispensed with the good news. We have made merry. Now, we are going to give you the truth and nothing but the truth. Some of us are here in America having fun. You live in very beautiful houses, I must acknowledge. Some of you have two or three cars. You have jobs to go to. You have food to eat. There is twenty-four hours electricity, there is water. There is also healthcare for some of you who are working. But where we come from, there is nothing. The reason why there is nothing is because those who are not worthy to be in power are those who are empowered. I told you, I told you, I told you repeatedly for the past six years, for those who can't listen, that a day will come, the fallen knees will march presently into our land to demand what doesn't belong to them. A day will come when you will beg to serve the zoo. A day will come when you will have nothing, nobody will regard you as anything. A day will come when your life will be useless. A day will come when you wish. You have never heard of the name Nigeria before. That day is now. It has come. We are the oldest people in the world. Biafrans are the oldest people on the face of this very planet by, bar none. Ana Bani Ndibo, Ndibo, the beginning. Because in Ibo lexicon, every name has a meaning. Every name has a meaning. The meaning of Ibo for those who do not know is ancient. Those that started the process, Ndembu, the very first people. But it's not a very strange, as the scripture makers are aware, today the first is now the last. Are we not the last? But unlike some people, I have shown that is why I do what I do, that is why we do what we do. Because we have honor and dignity. Somebody came to America and built it. America did not fall from heaven. Men built it with their hands. The funniest thing is that they needed Biafran labor to be able to complete the assignment. Because without Biafrans, there will be no America. Without Biafrans, the greatness of America will be diminished. Without Biafra, this country would have been nothing. We gave them free service for two hundred years. Most of the African-Americans you see, you call them Akata, some of them are your relatives. Some of them are from your father. Some of them are from your family. If you have a child and that child is suffering from a disease you can't understand. It is because you married your own bloodline. Which doesn't happen in our culture. Are you aware of that? You cannot even marry from your mother's village. You cannot marry from your grandmother's village. Are you aware of that? We came here, we lost our way. We became very selfish, we reversed everything that is good about us. We stopped caring. Those of you in America, you stopped caring. The founders of World Igbo Congress is here, some of them. What I say behind somebody's back is what I say in front of them. Had World Igbo Congress done what we are supposed to do, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be here today. But I do hope under the leadership of Professor Jofor. That things will change. That they will live up to the expectation. And rise up to this very challenge from our Ushafu learning. Because two days ago. They came for our land. That we are no longer content. With killing us and raping our mothers in Awagibom. In Enugu state and in Eboni. They are no longer content with beheading our fathers when we go to the farms. They are no longer content with raping our daughters as well and abducting them in the process. They have now come to take our land from us. And some of us are in America eating hamburger. Our race is about to become extinct. As I speak to you today, they have come inside Enugu, as they did in 1967. Because over the years, you refused to speak with one voice. You thought that fighting for leadership is the end-all and be-all of your relevance wherever you are. Every association you had was divided into four, five, six, seven, eight. Our men decided to embrace gossip more than anything else. Whilst our mothers were struggling and fighting. Our men were busy plotting how to divide every association that ever came up. They became merchants of gossip. And wearworthness. And that is why we are in this mess. Because had we been together like a people. Full and you will not have the temerity. To come to our land in front of our governors to demand that we give our land to them. I told you so. I told you so in Igbo language is abramuna wa. And I said when the time comes. Because that is how we say it in my village. We are no longer as intelligent as we used to be. We used to be a very intelligent race. The most gifted, the most talented. The most honorable, the most truthful. The most accomplished. Race in Africa. Today, we have been reduced to nothing. That ordinary Imobi meeting of Orhanese cannot be convened. Simple Imobi meeting. We have been reduced to issuing press statements. On the pages of European newspapers. Bet you had a television though before. I'm sure you know that. Do you know the name? It's called Minaj. In Obosi. Before Chinese came, before AIT came. But it died because it was owned by an Igbo man. Other Igbo men refused to invest in that very business. Because of our wickedness and backwardness. The Igbo people that emerged after 1970 is counterfeit, myself included. Fake. They no longer see what is coming ahead. They no longer have hope anymore. We became scavengers. And that is the reason why our land is going. That is why Fulani people can decide who becomes your governor. They tell you, no matter what you like you can do. We determine who governs. And they do as we tell them. How do you explain or pontify a governor in office? Fulani hismen are in our land killing us in Anambra, in Anam. Oh, Bia no know said anything. The funniest thing is that um. Some of us don't realize the mess we are in. We don't know it. And I can assure you that impunity upon impunity is happening in our villages today. The reason why you don't hear about it. Is because the Europeans are in charge of the media. They won't publish it. Our enemies are plentiful. As I said earlier today, I will paraphrase it today. There is the zoo called Nigeria. By the way, anybody who says he's a Nigerian is an animal, I'm sure you know that. How many of you here are Nigerians? How many of you here from the zoo? Some of us are not ashamed to answer the name that was concocted. Nigeria means the lowest of the low. The land of Nigas. Those who are abandoned. That is the meaning of Niga area, Nigeria that you answer. You are not ashamed of yourself and you say you're Nigerian. Can anybody tell me the meaning of the word Nigeria that you're so proud of? The woman that gave you the name saw you as a baboon. Some of you wonder why Africa is always poor. Every year poor. And the poverty in Africa is making it impossible for white people to respect black people in America. Don't you know that? The reason why Europeans are respected is because Europe is doing well. You respect Japanese in America because Japan is doing very well. Is that not true? And some of them come here visa-free, on a visa waiver program. That is how you know you've arrived. The only country with that privilege in Africa is South Africa. And surprise, surprise, it was wrong by white people for so many years. I don't know if we are thinking at all. Now the question is this. What is your purpose on this very earth? Is it to be a slave and a servant? After that, your children take over from you. And after that, their children in perpetuity. As you think you're giving birth to your children that maybe go to Harvard or Yale. You're giving birth to future generation of slaves in America. The reason being that Africa is so horribly bad. That nothing good comes out of it. The white man came from Europe. Came into our land and said, you, 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 from today, your name is Nigeria. And nobody asked questions. Ask yourself this very question then. Do you think that as an African? You can go into Europe? And say to maybe Hungary and Belgium and say, you, 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 from today, your name is Europa. Can you do that? That means you're not equal to a white man. It means you are inferior. Because there are things he can do to you that you cannot do to him. That makes you inferior. There is only one solution. That solution is Biafra. I said the solution is Biafra. The solution of black people is Biafra. The solution to the problems in Africa is Biafra. That's my job. I tell you something and you ignore it. Give it maybe. You will see it. Everything I told you came to pass. Only one is remaining. And that is Biafra. And I assure you that Biafra will come. That Biafra will come. That Biafra will come. You are the finest of the finest. I am very, very proud of who I am. I consider myself very lucky to have been born a Biafra. And that is why I'm very, very proud of Biafra. That is why I would die a Biafra. And that is why this Biafra flag will rest up. And that is why we got our independence and we'll be free. The same thing they did to Aziki where. They are today doing to all of us. Zeke was begging them to go to school, they said no. The same Ebelle, Aziki where. That's the name of Jonathan, isn't it? There is a saying where we come from. Good luck Jonathan went to Asarok. As his namesake did. His concern was Fulani education, Alimaji. And he reminds me of Obama. Because I know some of you here. Foolishly vote for Democratic Party. And say foolishly. Who ended slavery in America? Which party? Which party? Which party is the party of slave owners in America? Which party? I said to some, am I allowed to, am I dabbling in Bia politics here? Are you sure that Mula will not open up a probe against Biafra? For meddling in a nation in America? I said to people that when you elect a Democrat as a president. The only thing they can do for you. Is to increase the amount they pay you of food stamp. But the Republican Party believes in what is called tough love. You may not like it. But over time it will help you. I prefer that person that tells me the truth to my face. Than the one that be pretending. Supporting Alimaji in the north. Obama destroyed Libya. It was Obama that chased away Jonathan and Putin Bukare before Biafra. I think it was President Johnson. That introduced the new deal in America, is that correct? A landmark social welfare program. What are you going to remember Obama by? And he was there for eight years. And some people are grumbling. And I asked them and I said. That thing that Obama as a black man could not do for you for eight years. How do you want a white man Trump to do it for you in three years? Am I making any sense here? I wish they can deport all of us. Only then will our senses come back. Some of you here are engineers, architects, doctors, medical practitioners, pharmacists, isn't it? Don't you think it would be better if you're a pharmacist in your village? I like the way that Americans protect their country and how proud they are of it. Some people left from the sea port of Southampton in England. Aboard a ship called Mary Rose. They came here to found a new civilization. Under God. They succeeded in doing that and that. Today makes America the longest surviving hegemonic civilization since the history of humanity began. A few people. That boat could have sank in the Atlantic. They knew the dangers that we are facing. But the hope that America held and the vision of a new nation was so compelling. That every immediate danger furthered its significance. The sights were set on the goal. I don't know what your goals are for our people back home. Because we are dying. And those you put at home to take care of your states, they are our Ushafu learning slaves. They are also killing you. Some of you here, when I formed the BSS, I'm sure some of you here grumbled. And said out of balance, okay, we know the bububu. Is that not true? But I said that the reason why I formed BSS was to counter the coming of the Fulanis because I know they are coming. I see things that they cannot see. I knew that the Fulanis will come. I was preparing three years ahead. Some of you conspired. They must have caught at midnight here, it's 6 o'clock back home. You know, any morning gossip is very potent. That even men govern us or harness on their own decided to invite Fulani army to come and kill me, my family, and IPOB. And now that they have come into our land, the same people are saying that we are ready. And somebody asked them, "You're ready to defend our land against Fulani? Where are your children?" The same IPOB that was set up to defend our land that they betrayed are the ones they are relying upon to defend our land today. The reason why they are relying on IPOB is because they know we can do it. We have done it before. We continue to do it today. We shall continue to do it until Biafra comes. What I find very shocking is that people don't ask, "What are we going to do to stop these people?" When I seek for advice, what they tell me is to embrace prayer. Or to throw the diplomatic process. And he's in your village. What other diplomacy can this demon understand if not an AK-47 for an AK-47? I hope you are recording these proceedings. If those of you here today in this hall in Houston, where I believe WIC started. When they started WIC here, God was trying to send a message. They're not sure they saw it. WIC was set up here for this very day, for now. But I'm not sure that they quite understood the message. What Fulanis did is to say, "We went to kill Nambikano. We killed IPOB family members. And now Nambikano is abroad. We can march into Biafra. Nobody can stop us." You don't know that? When I came out of prison, I was back home. Did you hear about Fulani hate men? We drove them away. And because of the carrot of Igbo presidency in the year 2096. If you have been following the news, you will hear it. Those that own the zoo called Nigeria, Mietiala, they said it today. You know that meeting in Enugu, they sent their secretary, not the big ogga. The big ogga was waiting. The funny thing is that the secretary went to Enugu and told Devo Mahi, "We are prepared to offer you the presidency, but in return, give us your land." Devo Mahi said, "I'll consider it." You know what they did? That an Igbo man can never, ever be the president of the zoo. And to add to that, neither will Enugu. You don't know the game they are playing with Britain. They have gotten everybody where they want them. Now, believe you me, if they Fulani, so please is they can decide to rule the zoo forever and ever. There is nothing anybody can do about it. I said, "There is nothing we can do about it." You go to tribunal in the court to say, "Oh, my mandate was stolen from me." And the lawyer you're running to, Nigerian Bar Association, is running from the government. Government wants to kill them. Are you following? You are coming from this door. Maybe FBI is pursuing you from here. And you're running maybe to our, where's the secretary? Secretary man is here. And he's here defending you. But before you could get to the middle here, you, secretary man, what's your son? CIA is pursuing him, that place. Are you following? You said there is injustice in the land. I want to go to the court to find or seek, to seek the rest. Before you go to the court, the judges we are on the, judges in Agos. The same thing pursuing you is pursuing the judges. When the same thing is pursuing you and pursuing the chief judge, that led the Nigerian Bar Association to proclaim that Nigeria is a lawless society. And somebody will wake up tomorrow morning and say, "I am a Nigerian." Sometimes, I'm not trying to excuse racial abuse or attack. But I'm being very honest. If I read through the papers every day, you come from this hopeless British creation called Nigeria, where nothing works. People are fleeing, trekking through Sahara Desert and dying in the process. Drowning in the Mediterranean. Humiliated, sold into slavery in Tripoli, abused as house slaves in Saudi Arabia. And you still wake up and say, "I am a proud Nigerian." Oh, no, I won't feel sorry for you. Because you are foolish. Beyond foolishness. I belong to that very group of Biafrans that came here as slaves somewhere in a place called Savannah in Georgia. And they said to the white man, "Instead of me to serve you as a slave, I would rather die."
They sank themselves.
If we know what has befallen us as a people, as a race, there will be urgency on the part of everybody to make sure that Biafra is restored. Because I tell you today, the most educated people outside white Americans are Biafrans in America. The most successful in terms of their own business, startups and enterprise are Biafrans here in America. We are all these things for a reason. Not so that you can become very selfish and cocoon yourself in your detached homes and well-manicured lawns and gardens. Jukoke Khabiyam, I gave you that grace. That you may be able to use it to better not just yourself, but from the environment where you come from. And failure to do it, you know what the Bible, failure to do it. Failure to do it. And let me warn you, all of you here gathered, that's why I asked if this thing is being recorded. If you don't rise up from this very day, from this moment, to support IPOB, to confront the mess that our land has become in the hands of Fulani, Tanja Wade, Jihadis, God will not forgive you. Even the land of America will not forgive you. I know some of you may think I'm having fun. There are some people that think that they are leadership material. They want to lead. They join meetings because they are craving leadership. Not that they have anything to offer. If you want to lead, you come and lead and we'll follow you. But IPOB has a mind of his own. If I stop living up to expectation, this same IPOB that I set up will reject me. Do you know that? And IPOB does not belong to me. Biafra does not belong to me. It doesn't belong to my family. It belongs to all of us. The reason why some of you loosely admit that they call him Supreme Leader is because some of your priorities are misplaced. The Supreme Leader they call me is a kind name. It's not an official title. Makadiya Mam, it's not an official title. Are you hearing me? It is not an official title. It's a nickname. It's like... I am here to serve you, not to be supreme over anybody. Anybody that knows me will attest to find that I'm a very humble person. All the anger that I have inside me is against the enemies of Biafra. No, sir, against Biafra will help you. If against Biafra, it will destroy you. That's why I am. Looking in my direction and said, "My lord and my savior." That also is a kind name. They say it because, listen. When they go online and see sponsored attacks against IPOB and myself, they develop this as a defense mechanism and as a weapon of attack against that very person. That's why they do it. Not that anybody is coming to replace Yeshua. When I pray every day, I pray seven times a day. And I said to Jukoke Khabiyam, "I am only but flesh. One day I will die, but your word will live forever. And your word says that Biafra will come. And in my turn, that Biafra will come. And that is my hope." I am explaining this here out of respect for Houston. I am not a supreme leader. I am a supreme servant. Are you listening to me? They say it because they want to spite those. The reason why we do what we do is not so that we can fly all over the world and address our people or that we can put our lives in danger in search of a greater glory. We do what we do because we have been mandated divinely to ensure that Biafra comes in our time. And if Biafra doesn't come, then there is no God in heaven. That's what I pray. That's what I pray. Because your word is here and amen. Everything you say must come to pass. Though heaven and earth may pass away, but your word shall remain. Your word says that Biafra will come. Then therefore, Biafra must come. If Biafra doesn't come, you will all be destroyed. I said, "If you don't fight for Biafra to come, believe you me, out of anger, Jukoke Khabiyam will obliterate our race." Some of you want to lead. Now is the time. You don't need permission from me, not from our national coordinator, not even from Bonachim. Go and organize IPOB wherever you are. Do you know why it has to be IPOB? Because we never retreat nor surrender. IPOB will keep going until Biafra comes. Nobody can buy us. Nobody can intimidate us. Nobody can stop us from doing what we are doing. And by the way, we are joining people that the Fulanis are afraid of. Only IPOB can defend our land. And only you can support IPOB. If you don't support IPOB, my own passport color is red. Just understand that if you don't fight for your land, you forfeit the right to get angry anytime you are insulted. Do they insult Japanese people? Do they insult Japanese people here? Do they insult Japanese people here? And apparently Japan, eh bah? Ordinary Malaysians yesterday, do they insult Malaysians here? China, come on. Do they insult Chinese? Do you know why? All these places have developed and civilized. But sadly, Africa is not developed. It doesn't matter your title in Houston. It doesn't matter where you work, how many PhDs you've accumulated, how many white friends you have. Or maybe how many mixed race children you have. You can never be white. You can never be. Until you do those things that white people do, nobody can respect you. We will remain beggars for life. Give us visa. Some of us here are not ashamed that your own children will use their two legs to walk through the desert, to go to Europe or to be auctioned off as slaves in North Africa. You are not ashamed of yourself. In Alabama, they say, "I'm a big man, I've arrived, I have got 20 degree, I'm an engineer." Rubbish. You are nothing. But a glorified house, um, nothing. You decide what you choose to do from this day onwards. It is up to you. And I've taken bar in Houston, more or less having fun and praising Elohim for IPOB. But our land is under occupation. The phase of diplomacy has gone through the window. How do we drive them out is the question. And the only people that can do this is IPOB. Or why do you ask before man and before God in heaven? So you're petty envy and jealousy can't get you anywhere. You might have to be guys, we can fly in a bus in my village. And I met a guy named Ugu. And you want to rescue all of them. And you want a white man to respect you. When you try to do respect yourselves, when another man's land, yes, we built it, but by force, not voluntary. And that is why Biafra will come. All this is getting synchronized. As I was coming here, my wife was coming in.
I'm so happy to see you all today. A lot of people, I know I'm English, so I do speak. So I'm so happy and I hope that at some point I'll be able to say something. I'm happy to see everyone of us here and I thank God for good health and prosperity. We seem to eat a lot in America and you can see the evidence. So at some point I'll be able to say something. Thank you.
That's my wife, Makadiya, my Makandio. Somebody saw my picture with Monachi. You know Monachi is a troublemaker. I'm a person by them easy. Except for that. All the same, what I want all of you to understand is this. That you are better off working with IPOB to restore Biafra. Because if you like, you join us. If you like, you don't. One thing is certain. Biafra will come. And when Biafra comes, you will not come to Biafra land. Tupu, you see, he said. If you don't support IPOB, if you like, take an airplane to Rwanda and get temporary citizenship from Rwanda to come into Biafra land. We will not allow your plane to land. Because we are not foolish.
No, we are not.
You see, sometimes when people get angry in the Western world and they become racist towards black people, we don't actually capture the whole picture. All of us here, we have mobile phones, yes? Did mobile phone fall from heaven? Do you know that your mobile phone works with a satellite orbiting this very earth? Do you know how many people died to put one satellite in orbit? It's called sacrifice. All you do is you come, you consume, you consume, you consume. You don't contribute. That is why sometimes they are upset. India has gone to space. So has China. Maybe even, I think Brazil has gone as well. There is no indigenous African country that's ever come to space. I said none. And you want to participate, you want to partake in enjoying what comes out of this without understanding the sacrifice that goes with it. Some people are sitting down laughing at IPOB. We are dying. They are killing us. You can never ask yourself, "How can I help?" All that you're concerned about is. Who is their leader? What a career. He's a small boy. Yes, he didn't find the one. At what age did Obama go to become their president here? Forty-four? Forty-eight? Oh, forty-six? Forty-two? Lesser in his forties, yes? But he's a small boy. According to our culture, he's a small boy. That is how selfish some of our elders, it's say all of our elders, some of them are. Because when the Westman left, most of them were in their early twenties. Late twenties, early thirties. They were given the responsibility to pilot the affairs of the nation. But in our time, in our hometown, they say we are small. And I said to them, "For the past fifty years, with all due respect in the world, what have you achieved for us?" I'm not trying to insult anybody because if you've achieved something, Fulani cannot come to our land and say they want to take it. It is an indictment of the same type of association politics we have been playing for fifty-two years. If I ask some people here, they will say we have our own group. Our group is called this. Utundia, this gathering, that association. But all of us put together in other associations, we are worth nothing. Because if we are worth something, there is no way Fulani can come to Enugu and say to us, "We want your land." Are you following? You know, we don't take criticisms very well. May I take it that some people can't. What do we expect you to do? Is there any reason why all of you here gathered today will not come to Washington next year for a march? To let the world know what is happening to us? Any reason? Any reason? We will march next year on the third of July. Why are we going to march on the third of July? Because when you are in the country of a white man, for you to get anything, you must demonstrate on the street. If you don't, nobody will listen to you. That is a fact of life. Before women got the vote in America, the suffragette movement, they went to Washington, they demonstrated. Before Martin Luther King, may God rest his soul. May God rest his soul. May God rest his soul. Before he sacrificed his life for all of you, he marched in Washington, that you may have all those fancy jobs you have today. Without him, you would have had all the jobs you have now. None of you. It's called sacrifice. You must follow people, what they have done before. You can't sit in your house and write Trump about Biafra and Trump will respond. It's impossible. What cloud do you command? If we go to Washington next year, when they look through their windows on Capitol Hill and they see one million Biafras marching, you don't need to write to them, they will write to you. That is the paradox of the skyscraper. Do you know it? You know, after colonialism, after independence, most of the so-called nationalist leaders, in the case of the zoo, I call them the three blind mice. They said they studied abroad. They saw Chrysler Tower, you know those fancy tall buildings? They went to Marina Lagos and built their own. You know those tall buildings? Then grandmother, I lift a rock. But then the skyscraper, because there's skyscraper in New York, so we have to build one here as well. And after four years, no running water anymore. You live on the fiftieth floor. If there's a river, get a grooming and wear it and carry it up the stairs because of course lift is not working anymore. But you live in a skyscraper in Africa. Do you know why I call it the paradox of the skyscraper? Because when we come to this part of the world, all we see is the fancy stuff. Do you know that? The glittering fancy stuff, that's what we see. We never ask ourselves the discipline that would obtain that very productive process. Discipline. Biafra cannot be free until you fight for it. You must fight for it. Anybody telling you that I'm not here and I'm here like independence is a bloody lie. You must tell the world you exist. You must tell your politicians here in America not to take the vote of Biafra friends for granted. You must show them how many you are. You must let them know that you are here. That you hold the key to determine who goes into the White House in 2020. You can determine it. And once they know you have that power, anything you want, they give it to you. That is how politics works, not politics of the zoo. You carry money all over the place. Here is different. I expect you to be teaching me this. Therefore, those of you who are Nigerians. Those who decide to remain a part ambassador of the zoo, you have seen where it has gotten us today. Have you seen it?
Yes.
On a metro, they know that our land is under occupation. Do you know that Fulani heads men have come? Do you know that? Do you know that? Some of you don't know. And anybody who doesn't know, may Trump deport them or their children back to. Our land is under occupation, if you don't know, let me tell you. The reason why you're a Nigerian is because of the oil and gas, if you don't know, let me also tell you. There's some oil and gas, you don't enjoy it. Those are convinced the Jaws and so-called South South to fight their Igbo brothers and sisters. How far today? Are you enjoying that oil? Do you see how foolish we are? If this Igbo man wants me because of the oil, are you enjoying the oil? One billion dollars missing. One billion stolen by a Fulani man. Listen, I said one billion dollars. And if he has came out openly to tell the whole world that he doesn't know where the money is. Only Sametu. Listen carefully. Do you know there's a difference between billion and million? Do you know? Billion starts with B, million starts with M. Is that correct? Billion, we pick it in the calculator, zero, no more space. If you like, you try it. Only Sametu was given, listen carefully, four hundred million naira. Which highest is, um, 1.4 million dollars. If it's a factor, I think it's one million dollars anyway. And he's been dragged through the court every blessed day, every blessed day. Money they gave him for campaign, but a Fulani man sat down and swallowed one billion dollars. Now, do you see how meaningless all those associations?
Yes, useless.
Because if you're strong, such nonsense won't happen. Now, the reason why I keep pointing out the potency of our associations, proliferation. Everywhere you go, there's a new group. Everywhere you go, all amounts to zero. Only Mijeti Ala, one organization, one, from Fulani, only one. And they have taken over. I want to form my own, my own faction. Do you see how Fulani people succeeded in achieving their two-hundred-year-old agenda of conquering everybody? For two-hundred years, they planned and executed this. And I told you in Los Angeles, that day in the hurricane. Before I flew from LA to Houston, they have come into our land, asking us because they know that your petty envy and jealousy of IPOB, of the canon, will prevent you from supporting IPOB. Capable of defending our land. So Fulani people are counting on your wickedness. That's what they're relying upon. You people are the reason why Fulanis in our land. You people are the reason why Fulanis in our land. You are the reason. All those useless groups, associations, and are formed everywhere came down to... If you don't rise up, our land will be gone. And if the men cannot do it, I'm sure that our mothers can. If our men cannot do it, our mothers will. They force people to rise up against European rule in Africa. They force people, the whole of Africa, Biafran women. And maybe the time has come for them again to take the lead, last one. I don't remove myself when I say things. What I tell is for our own good, that we may change and become better Biafrans. Become better Igbo people, better ajos, better Ibbo, better Anan, better Idoma, better Igala. Can anybody tell me here the title of the traditional ruler of Igala? Do you believe that Igala people and Igbo people are related? Do you believe it? Have you heard of the title before, the Ata of Obosi? You have Ata in your village? His brother. They are from Igala. You know the man they call Iweka? You know Iweka? They named Opa Iweka after him. Do you know he's an Igala man? From Obosi? Is that correct? I may have, um, been born and raised in the village. Igala and Igbo are one. When we say that Igala is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that Idoma is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that Ajos is part of Biafra, we know what we are saying. When we say that Isoko is Biafra, we know what we are talking about. Is there anybody who is dressed like a proper Biafran woman here? Two-piece robe, anybody here? Opa pa bo? Oh, opa pa kama, open the legos, we're up there.